Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 18th, meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Let us begin our meeting, please, with a moment of silence. Let the record reflect that all members, with the exception of Commissioner Lucas, are present. Meeting is called to order and we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a time set aside for announcements from the Planning Commission. Are there any announcements this evening? Sure, Richard.
One announcement. This Friday, there's going to be a surf camp where they take disabled kids and there's this Friday by Coleman's Park, there's a group of volunteers. Our church is doing it, Charlotte Calvary as well as others volunteering to help out with these kids that they're disabled kids and they give them a chance to go out in the water and just surf and just have some fun in our property. I'll be this Friday in the morning at 10:00.
Thank you, Richard. Any other?
There is going to be a meeting at the, oh, no, I don't know, at the community center or the Veterans Hall at 4:00 on Thursday to summarize the progress on the efforts of the various land conservancy groups to acquire the Chevron tract. And for people who are interested in the progress or lack of progress, they should show up at that meeting.
Very good. Do we, do the staff have any information as to the location of that?
I was unaware of the meeting.
Oh, okay. Good. Well, I'm sure that's available online at the Morro Bay Open Space website, so those of you who are interested, go ahead and look that up. I have just one sort of housekeeping announcement to make. It's a very conscientious Morro Bay citizen has pointed out that it is not necessary for the commission to reopen public comment in order to ask questions of applicants or staff, so we can streamline things a little bit in the future by not going through that. I just would caution everyone that the fact that a question is being asked of and answered by the applicant does not reopen public comment for other members of the public, so just be aware of that. Okay, very well then, moving on. We have no presentations this evening. We do have two items on the consent calendar, the planning processing list and the minutes from our June 6th meeting. Are there any comments, modifications? If not, then do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move that way, approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion?
I'll say it.
We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. So our first public hearing for this evening, item B1, is case number UP 0-478 and AD 0-122 concerning a property, residential property located at 2445 Ironwood Street here in Morro Bay, and I believe that Ryan Russell will be giving us his first presentation on this. Yes?
Second.
Oh, second, okay, sorry, I spaced out the first one.
Thank you Chairman Teft and Commissioners. The first item on the agenda is our request for a conditional use permit and parking exception at 2445 Ironwood Avenue. Applicant proposes to add 151 square feet to an existing non-conforming residential structure as well as 78 square foot deck. And then we wanted to note that the addition is less than 25% of the habitable floor area. However, the project was taken in as a conditional use permit due to some errors of the building area calculations. We noticed the project with the Tribune and the surrounding residents, so we decided to continue bringing this project forward to Planning Commission.
I wanted to add a little something there. So what had happened is those building statistics were inconsistent on the plans, in fact, I think they still are actually, and showed an addition that was larger than the 25%, which is why we took it in as the CUP. And then we noted that the addition didn't match the statistics that they had on the page and they went back and corrected it. And so then when we got it back, we're like, okay, now it was fixed, and we went and scheduled it for Planning Commission meeting and then realized that it was under the 25%. So as Ryan said, we didn't want to pull it back after we'd already noticed it because people might want to come and comment on it, so we thought we'd just bring it forward as a result of that.
Question, okay, do you ask a question?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, Scott, I come up with 1,047 square feet for the total project. Isn't that above our 1,000 square foot minimum for a two-car required for a two-car garage?
Hence the parking exception.
That's the parking, so it's still come to us or would they have been able to?
Staff can issue parking exceptions.
Okay, so would they be able to handle that administratively?
We do, we do have the ability to do that. I think we've only done it once, but we do have the ability. There's usually other issues going on there with those and so that we don't typically do it. I think we've, since I've been here, I think we've done one. Yeah, one.
Okay.
The proposed project is located in the R1 S2 single-family residential zoning district. Specifically, it is east of Highway 1, north of State Highway 41, and south of Delmar Park. The structure is considered non-conforming with regards to the northern side setback, the one-car garage, so the parking situation, as well as building separation between the garage and the residence. This slide shows the existing site as seen from Ironwood Avenue, looking west and looking northwest. The addition will be in the rear of the property and the parking exception proposes a tandem space behind the garage shown here. And as you can see, there's adequate space behind the garage. This is the proposed site plan of the project. The 151 square foot addition is shown here at the rear of the property as well as the 78 square foot deck, and the site plan also shows the non-conforming side setback and the building separation. And just to note, I added a condition that requires them to move this rear storage shed to meet all Morro Bay standards.
So that item relates to the requirement to have six-foot separation between structures, and they wouldn't otherwise have that, so we've added a condition of approval for the project to require that separation.
This site shows the existing and proposed floor plans. The project proposes a hallway as well as a master bedroom with a attached bathroom and rear deck. This slide shows the northern and southern elevations, which show the addition here with the deck as well as here with, again, the attached deck. And this is the rear elevation showing the proposed addition right here, as shown from the rear of the property, and the proposed addition will not change the existing front elevation. So staff recommends Planning Commission approval of the requested conditional use permit as well as the parking exception through the adoption of Planning Commission Resolution 19-17, subject to the associated findings and conditions of approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any? Jerry?
Welcome, Ryan. On page four of the packet under building separation, the plans show seven foot one for the garage separation, but in the building separation paragraph, it says the existing resident does not conform with the separation requirements for detached garages described, such and such. The garage is three foot one away from the residence where six foot is required. So is the, and then you go to, go on, it says the proposed addition will require a condition to relocate the shed to maintain the six-foot separation. So was that just a misprint?
No, it's three foot one to the stairs. It shows that on the plans, there's another dimension.
So the stairs is considered in the building envelope?
Yeah, it's connected to the structure.
Yeah, correct.
So are we requiring them to relocate the stairs to, by turning them 90 degrees, they would be able to get the six-foot separation there?
These are existing situations. They're existing situations, they're not required to change it.
Okay.
Anything that you're doing new has to comply with the building code, basically. This is, this house is fairly old, been there for a long time, so it has non-conformities, which are not uncommon in the city.
Okay. Then the other question is, if this was to a, to a residence at three foot one, you know, I would probably be inclined to do, to do a fire separation wall on that garage, on the interior of that garage to keep fire area separation intact. Would that be, what are your, what are your?
You wouldn't have, you probably wouldn't have the authority to require it because they're not touching that building.
Okay.
You have somewhat limited, you know, discretionary authority when it comes to things you can require of the home as it relates to the additions that are being done. There needs to be some reasonable relationship to the addition and the condition that is imposed. There wouldn't be really, there really wouldn't be one there, other than an existing situation that's non-compliant with building code. I'm sure the house probably has several of them, having been built a while ago, not just ones that you can see on the outside, but ones that are, you know, related to, you know, how it was constructed and electrical work and those types of things, so it's all part and parcel with, you know, adding on to older housing stock.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? I was just wondering, just sort of my interpretation is that we're going from a two-bedroom house with a single shared bathroom to a two-bedroom house with two bathrooms, one of which is shared and the other of which is, communicates with one of the bedrooms, which then brings up a situation where that rear bedroom could potentially be a secondary dwelling unit. What kind of steps would be necessary if that were to be converted to an accessory unit?
They would simply have to come in and get a permit to do that. I mean, as it sits right now, it's a master bedroom with a bathroom in it. I mean, that's not uncommon. Many of you probably have master bedrooms that have bathrooms in them. Not an uncommon thing to have add, you know, add on to structures. It actually, some of these, some of these come in regularly where people do minor additions and they'll have, you know, improving the master bedroom, adding a bathroom to it, those types of things, because a lot of the older housing stock have only a single bathroom in them.
Yeah, the, I guess the thing that maybe makes it a little bit unique is, I guess, isn't there an exterior access to that area?
Yes, through the deck.
Right. So they would need to, there's some kind of permit that they would need to come in and get.
They need to get a secondary dwelling unit permit from us, yeah.
And would that potentially then impact the parking? Or if a parking exception is granted, well, it'd be an interior unit?
Yeah, the state sort of gutted the, you know, the requirements for parking as it relates to secondary units, so they actually don't have to provide any parking for it if it's within a half mile of a transit stop, which pretty much covers most of the town, so. But yeah, they would just come in and get a permit from us for it, and we would make them comply with state law at this point. We may, you know, have some additional requirements when we come up with implementation for the new zoning code as it relates to these, because we ran it by you a while ago and then got it ready for certification, got it approved by council, sent it off, and then the state changed the requirements and we couldn't get it certified by the Coastal Commission, so we're sort of back at square one dealing with the, with the current legislation states. But yeah, we have a process and we regularly have situations where these things, types of things come up and people come in and get secondary unit permits from us. It's not uncommon. We probably have a couple in process right now.
Then this is a public hearing, so we will open this public comment. We typically give the applicant or applicant representative the opportunity to comment first if you would like to do so.
Good evening, I'm James Spencer, the owner of the home. There is a method to the madness. Originally, it was just to increase the size of the existing bathroom, make it a little bit bigger to when I end up in a wheelchair, if I do. Hopefully, I don't have a little more room to move the back of the house out to where I could still have a room and an additional bathroom for like when I do have visitors, they can have their own bathroom. That's basically that. But as far as making it a secondary dwelling or anything like that, that's not even on my radar. Thank you.
Very well. Anyone else who would like to comment on this project? If not, then we will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Joe, let's start with you.
My thoughts don't really involve this particular applicant specifically, but I was thinking, much as Scott mentioned, as the houses in Morro Bay expand and perhaps the residents increase in numbers, families, children get older, these parking exceptions could place a burden on neighbors, meaning, you know, tandem parking is fine theoretically, but human nature being what it is, people tend not to use it. So one car parks in the driveway and one car parks in the right-of-way, and then if that's all the space you have, the right-of-way can't accommodate another car, then your guests presumably park in front of somebody else's property, or children who get driver's license park in front of somebody else's property. So what am I getting at? I'm thinking, I think I'd like to see that, some sort of rule in place where when we, when we allow these tandem parking exceptions, that the property at least can accommodate within the boundaries of the property two cars and a guest parking space. And I'm not, and I'm not suggesting that we even try to apply that here, but maybe in considering that in the future, in effort to sort of not, you know, place the burden of additional cars belonging to one residence, placing that burden on neighbors. That's all. But I'm fine with this particular, it's fine, so.
Jerry? No comments? Excellent. Richard?
The only comment I have, and I don't know if it would be, this just, I'm not going to require it because it's an aesthetic thing. I like the porch and the deck, but I think it'd be kind of nice to have a little, what is that, when it's called the open roof, kind of open beam above the deck?
Like a trellis roof structure, pergola type thing?
Yeah, I think that might be kind of, kind of nice, but I'm not, that's just what I've flashed when I stop by the property, you know? But I have no issue with the project.
Yeah, the, number one, I like this project because the, Ironwood is one of the, one of the few, or I don't know if one of the few, but Ironwood is one of the streets in Morro Bay where many of the original houses survive, you know? It's sort of an authentic neighborhood that hasn't been greatly redeveloped, and so anything that can make one of those existing houses more useful, more livable, I'm ready for In terms of tandem parking, I agree with Joe. It really, I mean, it really doesn't work, guys. We have a tandem parking situation at our house and the car that's in the garage ain't been moved in six months, so, you know, it's just too easy to hop in the car that's in the driveway and go do whatever it is that you need to do. So I really would, and it has nothing to do with this project. I would really like, though, as we look at the new zoning code, that we sort of look at alternatives to tandem parking for providing the uncovered parking lots. This house happens to have an excellent one, which is there is a gravel area next to the right-of-way, which is, which gets the cars off the street, they're easy to get to, you know, I mean, this, this is a perfect solution as far as I'm concerned. And the other thing that, you know, we need to think of, I think, is what we're really talking about here is potential parking spaces, not actual parking spaces. When I drove by, the garage door happened to be open and I don't think you can get a car in there. But however, you know, however, again, this is an issue for the new zoning code, you know what I'm saying? In other words, if we want to come up with some sort of regulation that will keep these parking areas open for parking, that's the, that's the time to do it. So I, you know, with regard to this property, I think that, I think the, I think the parking, the uncovered parking adjacent to the right-of-way is serving its function. I think it, you probably can get two cars there. There was only one there at the time that I was there, but, you know, so I think that, I think the property is adequately parked. The other thing I would suggest that we might consider, we're at 1,047 square feet, just over 1,000 square feet, maybe, maybe, maybe we need to look at what that square footage is that, that triggers the requirement for two, two covered parking spaces and perhaps come up with a little bit more sophisticated way to look at that. It may, may not only have to do with house size, but it may have to do with lot size, you know? Obviously, if you've got 1,047 square foot house on a 7,000 square foot lot, you have a lot more opportunity to provide onsite parking. So, you know, just things to, I think there's a lot of examples of things to think of as we move forward with the zoning ordinance, but as to this project, I'm totally fine with it. So if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion?
I can make a motion. Motion to adopt Resolution PC 19-17 with conditional use permit UPO 478 with the parking exception ADO 122 to allow an additional addition to a non-conforming residential structure in tandem parking at 2445 Ironwood Avenue.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second a motion.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any discussion on the motion? If none, then can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sadowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Luer?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
And Chairman Teft?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Very well, congratulations and good luck with your project. We have no further public hearings and no new business, so we will move on to unfinished business, rather chronically unfinished business. The downtown waterfront strategic plan, we have before us a revised draft reflecting input from the May 16th meeting, and we are asked to, we are asked to make any further comments, review it, and recommend forwarding to the city council if appropriate.
So we want to take a step back right now, and all of, several of you are probably looking at the online version of our agenda. The version that was printed and copied and posted actually had a new business item, C1. We're not going to take any action on it because it's not online. I'm not sure exactly what happened there, didn't really discover it until the end of the day-to-day that that was the case, but the item was to, it'll certainly give you something to think about for our next meeting, was to establish a subcommittee of the Planning Commission to work on Measure D with the subcommittee from the Harbor Advisory Board. So going to want to have two of you, you know, maybe take that on, to have maybe a couple of meetings with the subcommittee from the HAB to work on some of that language and then probably bring it back to a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and Harbor Advisory Board to see if we can't finalize some language to incorporate into the general plan, LCP zoning code update. HAB's really anxious to get going on it, Planning Commission's talked about it several times, so I think it's appropriate to have a subcommittee to work on it a little bit. Depending on how we form that, it may be, we may actually have two of the subcommittee members go to a HAB meeting and then two of the HAB subcommittee meeting members come to a, a Planning Commission meeting where we would have like a study session type situation, or we may have the two subcommittee groups meet. It is a Brown Act meeting, however, so it would have to be noticed. It would be more of a study session type situation, so unclear about exactly how we're going to do it at this point. Eric Endersby, the Harbor Director, myself, have kind of discussing options at this point, but want to leave that with you. We're going to bring it back on the first, and it will be in the agenda both posted and distributed, and so you'll be able to nominate, you know, a couple of members to take part in that discussion. And realizing that the Planning Commission, the full Planning Commission would to see it at a later, at a later date, probably have a joint meeting with the HAB to discuss what the subcommittees come up with and work that through, and then certainly as we roll on through the zoning code update, which is likely where it'll live, you'll see it again as part of that. So anyway, that's coming down the pike. Apologize for the sort of snafu that we had with the, with the agenda. Won't happen next week, our next meeting, and we do have Cindy ready to give you the opening presentation for the DWSP, so. Well, I guess, if you have any questions, I guess, before we go on, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have a question on that, Scott? With it being a voter initiative, approved voter item, whatever the terminology is, what, what latitude do we have to, to clarify or to change the?
We have every ability to interpret what we think it means.
Okay.
And so that's fine. We are not, I don't think at this point, unless the recommendation that comes out of the PC and the HAB is that we go back to a voter initiative to change it, we're just simply going to put down in the ordinance what we think it means, so everybody knows what we think it means. The problem is that that's not written down anywhere and it's, you know, in some folks' minds, been applied unevenly over time. Kind of hard to argue with that, because it has. And so, and that's because there's ambiguity in the language, and so that's what we're hoping to, you know, resolve. I mean, you've talked about it in the past, and so I think with the Harbor Advisory Board and the Planning Commission are good places to start to get that defined. You're the, you're the users of it, you know, they have a certain, obviously, a specific interest in that being in the Harbor Advisory Board, so I think those are the, those are the two bodies to get together to hammer that out, so that's kind of where we're going.
Scott, for this, is this maybe for the sake of efficiency with where we are with the zoning and everything? Because the other option is, is to put it out with new language. Because the other option is, is to put it out with new language and get in a voter initiative?
So, certainly, that can be part of the discussion that's had as you develop this. If you want to make a recommendation to council to do that, you certainly can. I think there'd be a lot of pushback on that, but who knows? Maybe we come out with something a lot of people like and that can be right up the flagpole. I'm not, I'm not going to guess where it goes.
Right.
You know, I think we probably are leaving Measure D. The idea upfront is to sort of leave it alone and then just define it so people can see what we as the city think it means and so they can see why we apply it the way that we do. And because, so, there's less questions asked and why did this person get this deal and that person got that deal and what's going on there. So, I think that's sort of the idea.
Yeah, I think, I think the community generally, from what I've heard, my sense is that the community generally supports the idea of Measure D.
Yeah.
Is not supportive of really changing the direction. So, whatever, whatever kind of initiative goes out, would go out there, is going to be general. I mean, it could be better than the language that's there, but it's still going to require interpretation and regulations to implement. So, I don't know that we'd be gaining all that much by going, by going back to the voters. Scott, is the waterfront master plan also going to be incorporated into the new zoning ordinance?
It will be there, but the zoning ordinance is probably going to tell us to go updated as a future project. It needs to be updated. So, it will be part of it, but it will also say that the document, so, there's going to be a list of things when we're done with the general plan and LCP that need to be updated, that are probably going to come out of this. It'll either be identified in the general plan as the item to be general plan, LCP, local municipal program, or it'll be identified in the zoning code as an item that needs to be updated. But I anticipate that to be the case, yes.
I just have some concern about coherence. In other words, hopefully with the new zoning ordinance, there'll be a place that you go to look if you're doing development along the waterfront and that will include the master plan, include Measure D, and you won't have to go looking over here for this ordinance and looking over there for that ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, again, also the idea is to, is to, is to pick it up and refresh it too, so, when we come out of that. Again, there's going to be a list of those types of things too, so. Again, the idea behind the document is also to have a fairly good cross-reference going on in it, so that it references all of our land use plans that are available out there and in the appropriate section, so you know to go look there because you don't know that now. So, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? And I guess we shouldn't get too far, well, it is notice, so we can't, I guess.
So, I mean, we did do a portion of that. We just didn't complete it and I, and I'm uncomfortable with us making a decision on it. I just, it was worthwhile to let you know that it was there, let you know that we really can't take, we shouldn't take action on it and then give you, it gives you a little bit of time to think about it if you are willing to volunteer or what have you. And then the, then the commission can take a, you know, a vote on it at the next meeting. I don't, I don't imagine it's going to be several meetings. I think you're probably going to have a couple of ad hoc meetings and then maybe a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, HAB. It might be one more meeting than that. I don't envision it being much more because Planning Commission will get to see it as part of the zoning code update and everything else, so you'll be seeing it later again.
Could I make a suggestion, though? If we're going to discuss it at the next meeting, perhaps it would be also worthwhile for the commissioners to bring issues that they feel need to be addressed by the subcommittee. In other words?
Yeah, that's great.
If we have specific questions.
Yeah. I'll even give you the, I'm going to make a note right now and I, I'll give you the staff report that we took the council on it too, so that'll give you some idea about where the HAB's at, because it included a lot of information that had been worked up through the Harbor Advisory Board. So, I'll give that to you too. And see a little bit of background documentation, see where the HAB's at, so you can kind of play off that a little bit. That's probably valuable for you.
Okay. Gee, it'd be great if we could find a representative that like had a boat on the waterfront or something.
Yeah, really. I, so I was thinking the same thing. I don't know exactly where that, yeah. Like your thinking.
Okay. Now, moving on to item D1, unfinished business, which is the downtown waterfront strategic And I believe that Scott is going to sort of start us off on this.
I'm going to hand it over to Cindy and she's going to give you, we have a couple of slides, not a lot. I mean, this is, as you remember last time, we kind of went through it page by page, but you do have a, you have a track changes word version of it as well that shows the changes that were made based on the comments, and so we have a little bit of presentation to speak to that.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Teft and members of the Planning Commission. Planning Commission reviewed the draft downtown waterfront strategic plan on May 18th. We got some great feedback from the commission. We took that feedback and we revised the downtown waterfront strategic plan, DWSP. So, here we are tonight presenting that revised DWSP to you for your review and then forwarding on to city council for its adoption. And as Scott mentioned, the way that we presented the changes so that you could see how we incorporated your comments is we prepared the final DWSP and that's been included in your packet, it's on the website. And then attachment two shows you in a Word format, track changes where those are. Not a whole lot of changes to chapters one and two. Would like to point out that one of the biggest changes to these two chapters is the removal of the lateral access chapter, which was previously going to be chapter five. That's a document, we've got grant funding to do that, we'll be developing that at a later date. By removing that chapter right now, it allows us to complete and finalize the DWSP. City council can look at this document after you do and complete this task, which is the DWSP. But the Planning Commission will be seeing a lateral access plan in the near future for that. Some other minor changes changed on the, one of the catalyst projects for Conference Center. The feedback we heard is that that should be a full-service hotel with meeting facilities. And then some miscellaneous edits to chapter two regarding key themes. One other thing I would point out is that under opportunity sites, we did get comment, I believe this came from Chair Teft, regarding expanding the number of opportunity sites to include those street ends on the west side of the Embarcadero. That is picked up in the economic development strategic plan. Under chapter 2.3, you'll see we've made some changes to the catalyst projects. They're outlined here on the screen, catalyst projects B, E, G, and H. The bullets on the screen briefly, you know, high-level view kind of tell you where those edits are. The seafood market concept, that's been revised to refer to that as a seafood and local goods market. One thing that we heard clearly was a need to better define ecotourism. And so, there is a paragraph of edits in your attachment two and it's also reflected in the revised DWSP about how we revise that. Again, rephrasing of the conference center concept, downtown streetscape furnishing, that's catalyst project H, and edits to stop signs on Morro Bay Boulevard and reviewing the city street tree list. And then the next couple of slides just go over some of the changes in chapter three and general design guidelines. What we heard from the Planning Commission is, one, importantly, a need to be consistent with the waterfront master plan under height, massing, and scale, the importance of building facades and integrating elements into the design of the building, greening in plazas and outdoor spaces and landscaping in these areas and that they be maintained and pruned and kept up. And then also parking, of course, we've heard this on several occasions, but that they're, well, this bullet actually refers to two concepts and that is, is that what you will see is that the need for designated loading zones. What we've seen is that, especially on the Embarcadero, there are times where there are load, truck deliveries and they are blocking off circulation through the Embarcadero. And right now, there's no good time or good place for them to come and that doesn't interfere with tourists and residents that are already on the Embarcadero. And then enforcement of timed parking in high-demand areas. We've seen this where even some of the business owners on the Embarcadero will tell us, we park right on the Embarcadero. And, you know, these are parking spaces that are prime spaces that should be reserved, or not reserved, but, you know, kept open for tourists, residents, the actual customers of the businesses, not the, the owners who park there all day long and maybe could walk a block. Specifically, this page speaks specifically to the downtown specific design guidelines. And again, as you see on the screen, that first bullet, what we heard from the Planning Commission is that it's important that the height be consistent with the predominant patterns of the area. So, if it's a street that's all one-story, that would be the predominant pattern. If it's a mix of one and two stories, again, authentic building design. Here again, this picks up parking and the need to find creative solutions for overnight parking, for lodging facilities, enforcing parking time limits or institute paid parking. And then we also heard from the Planning Commission about the need for commercial and also wayfinding signage, but importantly, enforcing our sign ordinance and commercial signage that's compliant with our sign ordinance. Waterfront design guidelines. Here are some comments that we heard from the Planning Commission as far as buildings and height, avoiding flat roofs and rooftop decks, restricting the height in some cases to preserve those public views from important scenic vistas such as from the bluff top to the waterfront, rock, and pedestrian areas of the Embarcadero. Character-defining elements and need for architectural quality. The commission gave us several examples of preferred siding and architectural elements and also called out to avoid stucco siding. And the DWSP also includes several examples, the revised version of designs for walkways and pedestrian areas and pointing out to avoid asphalt or plain concrete, and then examples of public street furnishings to improve that experience. And then chapter four, which is the implementation piece of the DWSP, some of the edits you'll see there speak to the updated timing of the catalyst projects. Some of the, the timing dates for these catalyst projects got extended, some got moved closer. And then two other areas, what we heard is develop commercial design guidelines, city-wide guidelines as a mid-range implementation item and install special gateway features in the public realm areas such as painted crosswalks or intersection markings. And this is the one thing you see in your Planning Commission packet. We didn't have this as a track change because it wasn't done in Word, but it was included in a table format. And that concludes my presentation. Staff's open to hearing if there are any additional comments from the Planning Commission and I'll, I'll let you take it away.
Any questions for staff as we start this?
Cindy, I, if it's in here, forgive me because I didn't see it, but when we talked about this the first time, I, I thought, I mentioned that it'd be, we were talking about yield grass bank, okay? And the potential for doing that. Would this be an, would this be something that we would be able to? Here's, here's one of my problems. We need to get ahead of the, ahead of the curve a little bit. Recently, I'm going to get the right number here, but yesterday, the California State Assembly and the Senate by supermajority had passed, I think it was AB, AB 398, which deals with greenhouse gas and, and I've mentioned this at WARCAC as well, when we were talking about energy uses and stuff and looking into that. Is this a place where that would be something that you would consider?
Is this a place where we would have yield grass policies?
Yeah.
Probably not, no. We probably, where we're going to tell us what we're going to be doing in the future, we're probably being the general plan and LCP.
Okay.
It has specific sections related to, you know, the biology and those types of things, the environment. Those would be where you'd be telling those stories and they would, it would talk about, the general plan and the LCP is going to have a, something not dissimilar to this, just much larger.
Right.
And it's going to say, hey, these are, these are policies and things you need to go implement and that's what's, where I'm going to, once we're done with it, that's what's going to go into our goal-setting process. This goes into our goal-setting process, our economic development strategic plan goes into our goal-setting, will go into our goal-setting process, as will, when we're done with the general plan and LCP is going to have a whole bunch of stuff that we're supposed to go do.
Yeah.
And then we're going to go do those things and so, over time.
Okay.
And so, I would think that it would be one of those things in there to work on the development of that type of, you know, yield grass mitigation banks, whatever you, what have you. Work with the surrounding, you know, resource agencies to see if we can't make that happen.
Okay.
You know, certainly there's a subcommittee at the HAB that's working on that now and...
Well, it's good.
Yeah, so we continue, we continue to do those types of things, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
It's encouraging to hear that somebody's got a pulse on it.
Yeah, I think it's, I think there's a need out there for sure.
Cindy, for a general comment on this, maybe a clarification. On the more specific design guidelines for both the downtown and the waterfront, when are they going to, or where and when are we going to incorporate them into, are we going to incorporate them into this document? Where are they going to be in the process? Because what, essentially what we have in here is, it seems to me is more of a wish list than a really verifiable and a, an executable document for, for us to come up here and say, okay, you've got to change this building design because it doesn't match here. This seems more like a wish list than prescribed requirements.
Yeah, I mean, if we do later get into that specificity, that would be an outside document, not dissimilar to the residential design guidelines.
Right.
That would be, again, one of those future things that we create. This right now is going to be your first, our first step toward that. Also, there's going to be a section in our zoning code that deals with design review and requires us to do that. It's almost going to be like a, we were literally looking at it today. And you'll be seeing it, they're the administrative provisions of the code and you'll be seeing them at a future meeting coming up here within the next month, month and a half. And it's a design review section and it applies it to all of our permits and tells you to go look at our design review documents, which is residential design guidelines, this waterfront master plan, Beach Street specific plan, North Main specific plan, tells you to go look at all of those things as well, so it has that portion of it. I think, as has been stated by the commissioners, there's a desire to go down the road to create specific and we're going to have a future agenda item. I think we forwarded out the commercial design guidelines that you provided and sent them to the commission. I think it's on our next, at least to have a little discussion about it at our next meeting or the following one, I forget which, I don't remember exactly. It's one of the ones, it's on the board in my office, I just don't remember which one it's on. So, we're going to be starting those conversations sort of in parallel, but it'll be an implementation piece that happens afterwards. We just, it's not part of, it's not part of the overall scope of this, other than to create a process for it, make it more definitive and to make people understand that they have to do it. And so, there's, your permit's going to have a coastal development permit, conditional use permit, and your design review permit essentially that's going to go with it. So, it's telling you that you have to do it. It makes you understand that it's important and this gives you things to look at in those areas anyway, to point to, to say your developer's not doing that. So, there's a lot more teeth that are going to come out of, and a lot more direction that's going to come out of the update now, as opposed to us basing it on, you know, the one paragraph policy that talks about neighborhood compatibility that we have in the general plan. That, that's not much. We're formalizing that and making it, you know, so everybody understands that that's part of the review process.
So, when we have conflicts between the design guideline and, and this document here, which governs?
Well, I think what we, when we adopt those design guidelines, we'll have a section in it that speaks to that.
Okay.
Yeah. That's, that's not uncommon when you have, when you adopt documents for specifics and then you have design guidelines and other documents. This is sort of what I would say, we don't have any for the downtown or the waterfront master plan, but they're fairly light. So, this is, this is a step in that direction. This gives us some things to look at and they're generalized concepts, but you don't even have those right now.
Yeah.
We don't have generalized, we don't even, you don't really have that. So, it's up to the board to figure out and I think the board, the Planning Commission does a good job at that, but at least you have something to point to and say, no, we really want it to do these things and your building doesn't fit in... really want it to do these things, and your building doesn't fit in because of X, Y, and Z, or your plan doesn't, or your concept or what have you. So, I think this is a good, this is a good start and will help us move down the road. And in using this, as things, as projects move forward, you'll get a really good idea for things that work and don't work when we want to incorporate them into specific design guidelines. So, it's not a bad idea to have a process for this, I think. I mean, I think it'll work well for the commission, really.
I kind of get the impression that these guidelines speak more to the overall look of the area, whereas the commercial design guidelines and the residential design guidelines really get down to, and this is what you need to do with your project in order to make this happen, these general goals happen.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair, yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead. I've got more specifics, but I'll...
No, go ahead.
No, okay. Yeah, continuing on that theme, and what my worry is, and this was personal experience here, I think Commissioner Lucas was involved in it at one point, was we had a building on the Embarcadero that I had, I had a friend, and he had a business further down, further down, down the road. The building came in, they were in the building on the waterfront to the harbor side and basically put up blank walls to the pedestrian side. We, as a planning commission, had no way to enforce them, or force them to change their design to create a more pedestrian-friendly building on the Embarcadero side. Subsequently, after the building was, was built, my friend's business saw like about a 20, 25% drop-off in pedestrian access because there wasn't, there was a, there wasn't a continuity on the pedestrian experience. And you could, you could go out there in the afternoon, you'd see people walking down to, down to this point, and then they'd kind of look around, and then they'd go across the street, and then walk around, walk back the other way. And this is my biggest concern with, with this document, that it doesn't, I don't think it has enough specificity for that item and those items in its current form to be, you know, to be, that we could say, okay, this needs to be done, so that we don't have that problem, that would create a better downtown or a better, better harbor front. So, you know, that's kind of my concern, and that's where I'm, where I'm coming from on this.
I'm not sure I'm exactly understanding what you're, what you're getting at.
Okay. Basically having, okay, having, having the pedestrian experience of continuity of transparencies and bays where, it says in the document, we do not want to have blank walls on the, on the pedestrian side, on the pedestrian walkways. Well, blank walls could mean anything. They don't, they don't specify that you cannot have, you know, that you need to organize your building in certain bays with, with the pleasing, you know, proportions so that they go from, that they're transparent across the face of your building, so it pulls pedestrians along to the next building.
So, I mean, we have about all the authority we need down on the waterfront to make that happen. We can be more explicit about it, but I'll give you an example. We went out with the RFP on Alpha Hook, and we got projects back and sort of went through them all and then got revised plans back on that. This is all on the consent of landowner side, obviously, the planning commission hasn't seen it yet. And, and in working through that, the designs that came back, a couple of them didn't have storefronts and windows facing the Embarcadero, we said, absolutely not acceptable. I said, that's the pedestrian way, you need to engage it. And we were very explicit on the, from the staff standpoint on that, and they, they changed their designs to accommodate that. I think the planning commission has all the discretion to make that happen, because that's what we want to do down there. We want, we want an engaging environment for the, for the pedestrians. So, so if you're concerned it doesn't do enough, we could add some language that specifically says that here, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, on my side, when I saw that, I was like, that's not okay. That's, doesn't, that does exactly what we don't want to have happen, and you just have the storefronts on the interior courtyard thing, and then a wall that had one window in it on the, that faces the street, that's not engaging at all.
Yeah.
And so, yeah. I mean, I agree with you against the point I'm saying, and so, we can make something, we can add, you know, a section that's a little more explicit if you'd like, I'm open to, open to that.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to see that, you know, as an item added to this, because that was, it was a previous staff. And so, it was, it was one of those situations where it did not turn out well for the community. Turned out well for the building owner, but didn't turn out well for the community.
And that, that would seem to be an issue, Scott, not, not only on the land side of the western Embarcadero, but also on the, on the eastern side of the Embarcadero. There are areas along there where, in the area where the plant place is and Harada's and that area, which are pretty pedestrian-friendly, and then there's, you know, vast wastelands in between. So, that same sort of continuity, I think we want on both sides of the Embarcadero. Well, really on the entire area below the bluff.
I agree with that. Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking just, I wasn't thinking just one side of the Embarcadero, I thought that, that made a lot of sense. That's a pedestrian-oriented area, and if anything, it'll probably become more pedestrian-oriented over time. I mean, I could see us making changes over time as it becomes, if it becomes busier. I mean, it's busy right now, and it's hopping down there. So, yeah.
And I would see that in the, in the general section, because it's also important in the downtown, because that's, you know, essentially, it's a problem with downtowns also, where you could have, you could have somebody coming in with a commercial building and not want to worry in it towards, towards the street for many different reasons, or have multiple cuts out of the building where you have driveways that are not friendly to cross, and those...
Commissioner Lord, if I could just, this may, you may be referring to something else, but in the general design guidelines, there is a section under height, massing, and scale that picks up what I, what I think I'm hearing from you on, on this. For example, you know, say a project came in today or tomorrow, council's adopted this document, and they come to me and they say, can I have this building with no windows? I would look to Section A2, I'm looking at page 3.6, by the way, of the DWSP. The scale of new infill developments should complement existing structures while providing a sense of human scale and proportion. And then Sentence 3, transitions and scale and character, I guess that goes on about residential. But the idea is that the document later talks too about facades and along key commercial corridors such as the Embarcadero, that we want to have street-oriented frontage, active uses that are visually and physically accessible from the street. And so, these, I, I, as a planner, would talk to my potential applicant and say, hey, what you're proposing is not consistent with this document. Like Scott said, we may be adopting specific commercial design guidelines that would give that parcel-specific teeth, but this as a strategic plan says, hey, we're telling the story about how we want the downtown and the waterfront to look and feel and interact, and we want to strategically connect these two areas for vitality purposes. That's kind of how I see this as a practicing planner.
But as a building designer, I would see a lot of loopholes in that. You know, you can have, you can have interesting and articulated designs that do not bring people along the, the, you know, the promenade, which is what we're trying to do. So, you know, I made a, you know, a real poor attempt here, but, but this was, you know, kind of what I came up with, off the, you know, off the cuff, was, building facades facing the pedestrian streets shall consist of a series of bays that are glazed to facilitate the movement of pedestrians and create interest that draws the pedestrians further down the street. Blank walls shall not be permitted. You know, so I'm sure you could come up with better terminology, but that's, is that getting the point across?
Yeah, I think it does.
It's, it's very similar to B facades 2, B2, similar to, building walls facing public streets and walkways should provide visual interest to the pedestrian variations such as display windows. Changes in building form and changes in material, texture, and color are encouraged. So, we could, we can incorporate it into that, I think.
And part of it's under windows and transparency.
Yeah.
Right.
We added some language to that, I think, out of the last, we made some...
But I think maybe that something to that effect could be added as one of the intents. In other words, elevate that to sort of one of the basic goals. You know, the, it says facilitate continuous lateral access along the waterfront, maybe something could be added to that, to, you know, to, to include pedestrian areas downtown and adjacent to the waterfront.
You know, and then under facades in attachment to Chapter 1.4, you know, large blank facade should be avoided, and the use of opaque and highly reflective glasses also discouraged. You know, once again, it should, you know, probably, I think legally shouldn't, should and that be shall, or where do we...
Shall is used for code requirements.
Okay.
Yeah, shall is code requirements, these are, these are, you know, this is a strategic plan, so a little looser in, in applicability. You know, when you want, when you're, when you're making people do things, you know, you're making them apply, typically that's zoning code standard type language you use. You've, you've, you've less of it in here, I mean, we can add it in if you want, I mean, I'm not completely opposed to it, I just, that's, that's why it's, you have a lot of that in here, just because of the type of document that it is, you have hierarchies of land use documents, that's all.
But from a practical, from a practical point of view, the planning commission would have the authority to say, we're denying this conditional use permit and coastal development permit because the proposal is inconsistent with the design guidelines.
Yeah, we would cite them as findings, I mean, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's exactly what we would do. That's how that would work, I mean, yes.
So, my, it's cumbersome, but, so, what are, I'm trying to follow.
Yeah.
So, what, if we are going to do that, do you think that maybe we should have, shall? In this document, or you feel that it's better to have it like this because of the type of document, and then put the shals in?
I don't have an issue with it, as long as we're not replacing every should with shall. When we start doing that, then you're talking about things that really belong in zoning. A few of them don't bother me too much. A whole document full of them makes me, it makes this look like, this is a zoning code, and that's not what this is. You know, we're using it, and you absolutely can rely on it to make decisions, and you should, and we'll, we'll be doing that, so that's fine. It's, again, it's just kind of the hierarchy of documents, usually use those other types of things in zoning.
I kind of have a problem with changing the shoulds to shals, and I'll tell you why. Because there, we have a lot of, we have pages of guidelines here, okay? And if we change a lot of them to shall, you know, that means that you have to do this from Section 1, and you have to do this from Section 2, and you have, it doesn't give us the flexibility to say, yeah, this doesn't really apply in this situation.
You know, if I've got one vote, I think the facades, the blank facade should be a shall. If you give me one shall, I'll be happy.
Well, there's an, there's an, there's a, there's sort of an intermediate thing, that you can say, blank facades are to be avoided, you know, and then you get away from should or shall.
Okay, I've got some other items on signage and stuff, but if you guys want to jump in on what, on your issues, I'll come back to them.
I mean, I think we're doing, we're actually, we're doing, are we doing questions now and then specific comments, or?
I think we're kind of, I think we've kind of moved into, I think we'll kind of, we'll combine them, okay?
Okay, okay, I'm good.
So, questions and comments together.
Okay, great, there we go.
I have just purely a couple of questions. Yeah, I'm really curious, with so many different items on a design menu, whether it's residential or commercial, and I, and I can see how some of the design elements assume a greater importance than others. You know, what's the mechanism whereby we get more than a minimum compliance? You know, that's what I...
So, this is, this is kind of what I was getting to before. I think we had, we had an informal design review process. It was associated with the permits that you were looking at, because we had neighborhood compatibility, you know, concepts, and in some areas, we had, you know, waterfront master plan has some design things in it, and our specific plans do too, not a lot, but they have some stuff in there. And so, in those areas, you were able to kind of pick and choose and make it a little more formalized, but when we move forward into our new zoning code, it's going to be a thing that they're getting. It's going to, you know, your, your permits, you have your use permits or UPO, and your CDPs have their own number, and you're going to have the design review thing that's going to have it on there as well, and they'll be finding specifically for it in your resolutions. And so, it's going to be a much more formalized process. So, not only do you know you're conducting architectural review, because you know you have that authority, but anybody else on the other side's going to know that because they paid us to do it, to have that permit associated with their application. So, I don't know, I think that, once you make that process more formalized, it's a lot easier to make people understand that they need to follow the requirements, and then we're going to have cross-reference documents that tell you, when you're in these areas, you need to go, look at those documents when you're designing your plans. Right now, we don't have any of that. You know, unless someone comes in and talks to us, and we're able to point them in that direction, they don't know. And mostly, people will come in and talk to us, but every once in a while, somebody walks in with a whole set of plans, like, here you go. And then, you know, we go end up fighting it out, you know, and get it as good as we can before we take it to the planning commission if it comes here. I mean, it's, our process, that stuff's going to go away when we get the new code in place, so...
Well, but I would, I would imagine 80 or 90% of the building permits, 100% of the building permits go to your office, but perhaps only, we only see 5 or 10% based on conditional uses. Would that be the same sort of proportions? Or surely we're not going to see, you know, that there's, we're not going to have a design haring for every commercial building? I mean, I wouldn't mind that, but, but I suspect we're not, I mean, what?
Most of the, most of the changes that'll happen to commercial buildings, significant ones with additions and things, will come before the planning commission.
Oh, I see, okay.
We don't, they do now, we just don't have anybody do anything to commercial buildings much, although we have a lot of interest right now. There's a, there's a lot of buzz kind of happening right now. We're busy again, and a lot of folks come into the counter with commercial projects that they're looking to upgrade, you know, revamp, that type of thing, so...
Would that also be true of new commercial construction as well?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Yeah, so we're, I mean, there's actually a lot more interest in, in town right now than there's been, and gosh, since, I've been here for just over three years, and so, past probably two and a half, there hasn't been as much as there has been over the last six months.
I see, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's interesting, and, you know, and we're experiencing also a lot of applications right now that are going through building, and we've, like, this last month, there was 60 or 70 building permit applications that came through, so...
So, in a, in a sense, after this program gets up and running, the applicants are going to have to discern based on your advice, you know, what we're looking for and, and comply with that, and knowing full well that, that many times would not represent any sort of bare minimum, but really making the city better.
And my expectation is you're going to have a much more robust section in your staff reports that deal with design review, because we're going to be working with them upfront to get it as good as we can before we bring it to you, and then we're going to note, hey, this project still has issues with X, Y, and Z that we see. And so, you'll, you'll get a lot of guidance there from, from us, and you'll get a lot more analysis from us on those types of things. And that's, whether that's in a table format, or it's just written out section by section and unclear yet, but I, you're going to get a lot more of that in staff reports that you really don't get now, sort of formalize that process. And so, you'll have something to look to, to start from anyway, and so will the applicant. They'll get to see that staff report too and realize, and we'll already talk to them about it, but they'll realize, you know, where they need to be and the issues that we find with their projects, and they'll have to come here and explain themselves to you as a result of that. So, yeah, I think it, it works as tools for you, but it works as tools for us too. So, it's, we like having these things to point to and, and be able to talk to people about, so they know, and give them something like, these are the things you need to pay attention to, so we'll get better projects over time as a result of that.
Comments?
Okay, comments. I've said before, this is a really worthwhile and ambitious document, but it's also ambitious in terms of time and money and efforts required. I've said before, this is a really worthwhile and ambitious document, but it's also ambitious in terms of time and money and efforts required. So, I just focused on a, on a few things that I think are sort of small things, but could be, could be addressed sooner rather than later, and I don't know if they really merit modifying the document for just some thoughts on mine, which was, I would really like to give very high priority to maintenance in terms of the waterfront and Morro Bay Boulevard, just to, just, whether it's cracks in sidewalk, or upturned sidewalks because of trees, or peeling paint, or trashcans, because that really conveys a very strong meaning. It's kind of akin to that, you know, broken window and no graffiti school of, you know, police, police work. I think that improves everybody's attitude and impression. I also think, one of the current lots on the Embarcadero, I think we should really think about turning that into some kind of a park area before demands to use it in some other way materialize, because, you know, God's not creating any more vacant land, and to have something in the area of the Embarcadero that was swings and carousel, and trees and benches, and a place where people could just sit and relax, would be important to creating the kind of ambiance that we want on the Embarcadero, which is to have people come and spend time there. And if we get, we convince people to come and spend time there, invariably, they will, more will spend money, and more merchants will come, and perhaps, you know, some of the more upscale merchants will follow, and that's, so that's how it happens. So, the thing is to get people there, and you get people there by making them feel comfortable and enjoying the environment. And I don't think it takes that much in terms of seats, trees, water fountain, things of that nature. And I, with respect to the additional family activities, either in proximity to the Embarcadero or one of the more outline lots, I don't think that's essential. And I say that because Morro Bay has so many family activities, whether it's kayaking, or paddling, or hiking, or boating, or surfing, or hanging out on the beach. I don't think there's any shortage of family activities. So, I don't think we need to have something dramatic like a nearby paddleboard courts, or certainly not a trampoline on the Embarcadero, or anything like that. I would really like, again, in this, this document is a fine document, but inevitably, it'd have to be sort of prioritized, and I would like a very high priority to be given to the completion of the Harbor Walk. Because, again, why would people want to come down to the Embarcadero? To see the water. And it might have an ancillary effect, that if more people are on the Harbor Walk than are on the sidewalks, that will be an incentive to the merchants to do some things differently, or to attract people into their shops, as, you know, there'd be less opposition to perhaps eliminating sidewalks, curb parking, or widening the streets, and things like that. I saw something that was interesting about, many people who come to Morro Bay don't know about the fish market, and if, and, you know, I didn't take time to actually look to see what sort of signage there is there, but I would imagine that the signage for fresh fish could be enlarged and emboldened, and made more obvious. And related to that, well, I personally would like an examination as to why the, that second fish market didn't succeed, and what remedies we could put in place to see that that doesn't happen, if someone else wants to, you know, venture to do that again. I think the idea of the museum, the Maritime Museum, is a great idea, but I'd like to make sure that it's really kid-friendly as the Natural Museum is, the Natural Science Museum, so that kids can crawl on boats, and I have a feeling right now that the Maritime Museum doesn't have much interest for youngsters, and hence, you know, parents to take them And again, with respect to the Centennial Steps, which is mentioned in the document, you know, you know, we should, we should, we should make clear that, I think it's, I have, I have the impression from looking at some of the designs, as though people were planning a kind of a, you know, a mini Rockefeller Square, or California Plaza, that somehow, what we did at the, at the Centennial Steps would attract people, and I don't really think that's necessary. Again, I think if you, if you provide trees and benches, benches in a grassy area, people will, will find that attractive. I don't even think that the existing steps are a particular, a particular barrier from the downtown area to the, to the Embarcadero. I, you know, I think people tend not to go to the downtown area, because there's, there's nothing really driving them there yet. So, perhaps, you know, something like they have in malls, where there are maps and indexes that tell you what sort of merchants are in the downtown area, you know, people could look at that and find out that, yes, there are some, there's bookstores and attractive restaurants in addition to thrift stores, and, you know, that might push them in that direction. But I, I recall those drawings, and, you know, the open expanse of plaza, and the hard edges, and the kind of an over-engineered, over-designed. I think that's, that's the keynote. You know, plans for the future of Morro Bay should not be over-designed. There's a kind of a smallness to the, to the town, you know, and a, and a, I hate to use the word cute factor, but, again, the simple sort of arising informally organic, that's what's really attractive, that's attractive to people who come to Morro Bay, whether it be on a temporary or a permanent basis. I guess I'm going out at length. The haulout, what, you know, we should, we should examine what in the way of incentives, be it the city, can provide to make that more of a possibility, and I don't know if that means, you know, holidays from the city's share of property taxes, or waiving fees, or whatever, but I suppose, I hope people have thought of that, but what could we do to encourage that and make it easier for that kind of an investment? Again, there were references to making the entire commercial area more pedestrian and bike-friendly, and again, I want to reiterate that, you know, for it to be bike-friendly, it's essential that the bike lanes be protected from traffic by more than just paint on the road. That a great many people who would use it, or allow their children to use the bike lanes, will not do that unless there are barriers protecting the bike lanes from the roads, or barring traffic in close proximity to the bike lanes. There was, there was a reference to, you know, height limitations in second stories on bluff areas, and I'm aware of how second stories are regulated in, in most areas along the bluff, but there is that one area by the Embarcadero where there seemed to have waived those restrictions that are in places, and other places. I'd like to see some sort of limitation on the square footage size of a second story, so that, so you, so a second story has to be less than what a first story is, even in, even in, even in the bluff area, that's current, where we currently allow more height than we would otherwise, where the bluff area is less protected by the restrictions that it is in other parts of the city. And, and my final thought was with respect, and again, I, I don't know the difficulties involved in this, but, but I wonder if we could have some kind of a tour program for the generating plant. One, because there are people interested in just seeing what it looks like inside, and we probably have to overcome some sort of insurance difficulty, but it's probably surmountable. And the more people that we have going and looking at it, I think, the more it will generate ideas about what to do with this space, and who knows what, you know, and again, that would be, it's a kind of an easy thing to try. But I'll, I'll stop at that.
You guys got it?
Yeah, it was good.
Richard?
Just kind of piggybacking on what you said, yeah, I think that, and I know, you kind of explained it to me last time, that the power plant is separate, but we need to be thinking as integration with what we're doing with here, and how it's going to integrate. I, you know, I'm, when I went through this, and I just kind of flashed a couple of things, you know, affordable housing was one of them. In the downtown area, we were talking about, like, having it zoned, so if, you know, having height allowances, if there was an affordable housing over commercial, that's cool, that's, I like that. However, we had a project that was on the Embarcadero, affordable housing on the Embarcadero, and those, you know, where they had, they had to section one room or something to make it, I don't know if that's a requirement by coastal, but that doesn't make any sense to me at all. It was a, it was a hotel or something, I think there was some discussion.
It was for, was probably for affordable accommodations.
Affordable accommodations.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't for, it wasn't for housing, it was just to have more affordable rooms, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, okay, my mistake then, because that, that accommodation shouldn't, you know, I don't think, should be whatever the market can hold. The other, the other thing is, is regarding a area for, for families to kind of get together, I think the last meeting, I think it was Dr. Teff mentioned, the Coleman Park area there where the basketball court is, and how it's underused right now, and I think that's an opportunity area, that we can do something like that. I'm not in favor of a trampoline or any kind of stuff on the Embarcadero, I think there's better use of that. Bike-friendly, I, I, I just don't, I, on the Embarcadero, if we're talking about the Embarcadero, I, I think that we need to be focused on pedestrian-friendly, okay? And not worry about the bicycles, they can walk, or dodged or whatever, but, but, they, we, the walking accommodations need to be, that, that is, that should be the forefront, that should be on the, on the priority. Oh, the boat, the boatyard haulout facility, it says that it's moving along, okay?
The RFP is out, maybe closing this week, actually. RFQ is out, or maybe closing this week, I think. I could look it up here in a minute if you want, but, I mean, it's, so, it's been, it's been soaking for a while, and I don't know how many applications the Harbor, Eric Endersby, the Harbor Director's gotten in, and I haven't had a chance to touch base with him on it, although I've wanted to ask him a couple of different times when I've thought about it, but I don't know where exactly where I am, but I know that the, that's, that window's closing, and so, we'll be reviewing those applications, those responses, I should say, shortly.
Okay, Scott, so can you tell me, what, what capacity are they looking at? Are they talking about, like, just, like a forty-foot sailboat, or are they talking about fishing boat? You know, what?
It's going to have some limitations based on the size of the, the facility where it's going to, like, the proposal is to put it in the triangle parking lot over there, so that's a fairly small footprint.
Yeah.
And it, not fairly, it is, it's small, it's tight, it's going to be tight.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not going to probably have as much boat storage there that folks would like, as well as my guess, but I don't know. I'll be interested to see what we get back. I mean, hopefully, we get a few proposals that come back on it. I know they went, they went through this process because there was a couple of interested parties out there at least, and so hopefully, we get a couple to find out. I'm, I'm curious, I'm not sure, I, I know, we know we did some preliminary layouts, and looked at paths for the travel lift and those types of things, where they could go, a couple different ones that, that R and worked up, and reconfigurations of the parking lot, and relocation of some parking spaces, and creating some angled spaces there to, to get the widened lanes, we were going to lose parking, we wanted to make sure we put it someplace else, and we were able to do that with the plan they came up with. So, hopefully, we can incorporate all that into something that works, and, and to Commissioner Graffia's point, also, I think, the whole idea about incentivizing, it's going to be based on what they need to make it financially feasible, in the near term and, and long term, and, I mean, you know, there's going to be, there's probably going to be a negotiation that goes along with that, because I think profitability on this is going to be tight to start with, to build a facility there, because it is small. You know, I think that's going to be part of the conversation, but, you know, we're starting it now, we'll be getting into it here in the next couple of months, I think, so we'll know more, you know, as that, as it moves forward, so. I'm kind of excited to see what we get, I guess, right now.
Yeah, I, I just feel that we should, we're limiting ourselves there, you know? I think that, that we should think of a proper boatyard, you know, with some room. The other, oh, this touched on page 134, but I just, it touched on infrastructure and And, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, like, state parks are just treated like a regular customer, and, and I know that, you know, I've said this before, I know that people say, oh, state parks don't have any money, but, you know, I, I feel that we, we want to expand, we want to bring in tourism, but we've got to be careful we don't overburden our citizenry in indirectly sponsoring these things. We need, we have infrastructure issues that we know, and, and when we look at these things, they should be, because there's, I've talked about this before, there's pockets of, of infrastructures in, like, collections that are, that need to be upsized, you know what I mean? And we need to, like, forward-think that, and when we do the development, so it doesn't come after the fact, it kind of laced right into that development, you know, like, the project that we had earlier, last, last meeting, you know, that, that kind of language, but same thing with the Embarcadero, you know? When we start getting more hotels, and, and, you know, then the spike and flows come in, and we should be able to, be able to handle that, and how do we, that's part of maybe economic, the economic portion of it, but always have that in, in, in the mind, you Parking, in the, I think that the, it kind of goes back. To me, parking on the Embarcadero should be really kind of limited to what we need to deliver, like, deliveries and stuff like that, but I, I feel that we, we, we need to... deliver, like deliveries and stuff like that, but I, I feel that we, we, we need to look at the Barcadero, I mean, I wouldn't even mind it like all pedestrian, you know, and just have delivery times, you know, that way. Because I feel as we get more and more people, as we become more and more friendly, you know, then, you know, like, people start coming in and, you know, you just got to look at the weather, you know? You know, you go over Tuscaloosa, it's 117 degrees or 107 degrees, and here it's 70, you know? And, and so those are going to, that's going to draw more people, so we focus on that, on that bike, I mean, on that pedestrian friendly, you know, kind of keep that in the forefront as we go through any project there. And then the design, I agree with Commissioner Graffia, is that, you know, the, keeping it organic and not trying to Newport Beach it up, you know what I mean? I liked what was said the last time we talked about this by Commissioner Luer, where they used the mixing of galve, galvanized and wood and that, that feel, you know? And I think that will, that's what more, I feel Morro Bay is, that, that kind of like more, you know, like almost a little kickback in that time machine a little bit where you, a life more simple, you know? And I think I've said enough for now.
Jerry? Did you want to go?
No, go ahead.
Just a couple, a couple more items. And these are fairly specific again, I guess that's the way I think. You know, on the signage, the, so we're talking about attachment to chapter 1, 1-4, item 4, commercial signage. I would like to have something where we, and this may be in the sign ordinance, but I'd like to have something where we get away from internally illuminated signs, you know, having a plastic.
It's in the sign ordinance.
It is in the sign ordinance? Okay, well, it would be nice, do we need to, should we state it here again too, or? But, okay, as long as it's in the sign ordinance, then I'll let that go.
It is, that was a, that was a big component of Chair Teft there, was bringing that forward. He was a big component of no internally illuminated signage.
Okay, I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
And then also, you know, maybe this is in the sign ordinance too, but I'd like to see a, a phasing out of non-conforming signs, so that they're not grandfathered in for any, for any reason unless they're a historic or culturally significant sign, like the minor sign over the warehouse that we deemed was a, was a, was an important sign and we left it there or was out in the sign ordinance. And I think we should have a set date that, that in the downtown, in the Embarcadero area, that non-conforming signs should be phased out within, I don't know, five, seven, or 10 years after the date, after the implementation of this document.
So I would say to that, that the appropriate place to have to live would be in the sign ordinance. That's something that has to be determined as part of that, probably not this.
Okay.
And that just has to do with the timing of things. You know, we're going to have a whole sign discussion moving forward and, yeah, so I think that's the area probably needs to live with and have the discussion with before we, you know, would put it in something like this. It needs to be probably done through that.
Okay.
Would be the appropriate mechanism, although.
We were talking about commercial signage.
Fair enough, no problem. I'm just sort of pointing out that's probably where we need to deal with it first, because that's dealing with it comprehensively. This does more along, this is a little more, a couple of levels up, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's one of my shals, I guess. And then we're, you know, a real pet peeve of mine was, is on public street furnishings, concrete furniture, concrete benches, concrete planners, concrete trash receptacles, they have no place in this city. And there's, there's been several efforts, we've brought in the art people to come and decorate them, to make them not look like that, but I think we shouldn't buy them in the first place. And I would like to see that. Stated out, just no concrete street furniture. And then just some random, just some, okay, on bluff development, chapter 1-4, attachment 2, there was, number two was roof ridges should be oriented perpendicular to the direction of the slope for, or, or, or parallel to the ridge line. So roof ridges are always parallel to, to, to a ridge line. Are you talking about the roof ridge line or are you talking about the bluff ridge line? And if you're talking about the bluff ridge line, it's, it's opposite of what we're talking about for slope. I just didn't, I don't understand that, that sentence.
Are you looking at the?
On the corrections.
You're looking at the, on the corrections, okay, and so what, it's section?
It was, it doesn't have a page number. It's attachment to DWSP, chapter 1-4, bluff development.
So, so the, in the, in the beginning of the, of the chapter, is it, is it a chapter 2? That 1 through 4 just means there's 1 through 4 chapters.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So like, is it policy 2-point something, 3-point something?
Yeah, there was, it's a, is it downtown specific guidelines? Yeah, it's underwater specific guidelines.
Okay.
Yeah, there weren't any page numbers on these pages.
Yeah, that was, sorry about that.
No. And then bluff, it's under bluff development. Maybe you could explain that to me or?
What?
Number 2.
Number 2, oh, okay.
Roof ridges should be oriented perpendicular to the direction of the slope, parallel to the ridge line.
Which one would it be?
Roof ridges should be oriented perpendicular to the direction of the slope.
To the ridge.
Yeah. Or parallel to the ridge line. So basically you can orient your roof any way you want? Yeah, that might, that could use a little work. I would, I would agree with that.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, it went round and around my head and I couldn't, couldn't make sense of it. And then just, you know, a couple of just random thoughts was that, I, you know, it really bothers me that we have this great environment and we have this incredible, incredible asset, which is the harbor. And we, you know, we don't have an entity in the city to, to play on that as much as we should, I think. We don't have, you know, parks and recs, you know, I'm not blaming them, specifically blaming them out. You know, the, the yacht club tries to do a bunch of things, but they get absolutely no support from the city for any, any of their, any of their items, such as, you know, summer sailing, you know, their, their kids, you know, their, the programs for juniors and all of that. But what I think we really need to do is to promote, to have some entity that will promote the harbor act, things that could be done in the harbor activity and get that interface between the water and kids and people, you know, such as dragon boat races, you know, maybe kayak, you know, have kayak, you know, wooden kayak displays and, and, you know, an exposition, wooden boat, you know, we talked about wooden boat shows and stuff, and I think that's really, would be great. Having, maybe have the city open up, you know, talk to some commercial fishermen and open up commercial fishing vessels that people could actually go on, you know, maybe even during the harbor, you know, the harbor festival. You know, I think there's, there's paddle boarding, you know, stand-up boarding, there's, there's a lot of things that the city could help promote for harbor activities that I don't think they do enough of. So, you know.
We do have it sort of identified in the ecotourism section, you know, and it talks about dragon boat races and, and all of those types of things are here. And it hasn't, this is the implementation piece, so it talks about who's supposed to be doing it and how we do it. So would be us just working with the chamber and potentially, actually the recreation's a good idea, I might add that in here. Us all, yeah, it's on here, I'm sorry, a support role would be recreational services to enhance that. I think that's, that's, that's a valid, I mean, that's a valid thing and something that's already, that's in the, in the plan, I think, right?
Yeah, okay.
So we'd be doing that.
I missed that in there then, it's, because, but I think that would be valid and it would be great. I mean, what better way to, to expose people to Morro Bay and bring more people here than, than that kind of stuff? Okay, though, I think that's the gist of my comments.
Very well. Well, I'm, I'm going to start out by agreeing with most of what's been said so far. In terms of, in terms of the lateral access, in terms of the harbor walk, I think it's important to realize that we're going to have to get creative in order to make this happen, particularly where, particularly where commercial activities have been involved, that we're going to have to look at elevated segments, we're going to have to look at, you know, different options that will, that will actually allow people to see these harbor-related activities and yet still will allow trucks to go underneath and load and unload and that sort of thing. So I think those are areas that are going to be the most difficult and, you know, are going to really require some thought. In terms of scenic issues, you know, it's, I recently heard that PG&E has a fund to underground, that will pay to underground utilities that we're contributing to with our monthly electric bill. We need to tap into that, guys, that we, we need to, we need to get that happening here in Morro Bay.
Yeah, they, they don't have a whole lot of money in it. We were going to, we were working with them on using some of those funds to do some undergrounding in other areas of town and they, their funding was put someplace else apparently because they kind of pulled up stakes and left. They decided not to do it, so I'm not sure what was going on there, but there is money available. It's usually prioritized for the 12 KV lines and above. And usually on areas that are designated scenic highways and those types of things is usually the priorities that they use for those. But I largely would not have been very successful, maybe because we're small, in garnering those funds to do that. But it's a need for sure. I mean, you look at some of the, or utilities are, it looks like spaghetti up there, and would do a lot when you can underground large sections to really beautify the city, that's for sure. Anyway.
In terms of bicycles on the Embarcadero, I don't, automobile traffic on the Embarcadero is oftentimes slower than the bicycle traffic. I mean, I, I see that as being an area where automobiles and bikes can blend relatively safely. If, if bicycling becomes more popular, I think the issue may well be interaction between bicycles and pedestrians. You know, the, the issue may be preventing cyclists from riding on the sidewalk, you know, from, you know, stopping at crosswalks to allow pedestrians to cross and that sort of thing. So I kind of see it as, I kind of see the main conflict there as being bicycle to pedestrian rather than automobile to bicycle. And one other, well, two other, I strongly endorse Jerry's idea of developing a wider variety of activities. I think we need to have, I think, I think we need to be a little bit more thoughtful. I think activities which don't involve drinking alcohol and listening to loud music would be helpful. At one point, at one point, we had a, Morro Bay had a fireman's muster here during 4th of July weekend. That was great. I mean, tug of war, you know, competitions with hoses and, you know, that was, that was, that's the kind of, that's the kind of thing that we need to, I think, I think it's compatible with Morro Bay's character, it's family-friendly and, and people really get into it. There was this, this probably belongs to the sign ordinance, but I'll throw it out just so I don't forget it. There was an email from a citizen who suggested that freestanding signs along the Embarcadero be oriented perpendicular to the Embarcadero and/or the shoreline. I think that's, I think that's a great provision to add to the sign ordinance. But then the, the main point that I would, that I would like to get to, and I, I'm not sure how we incorporate it into this document, but, you know, this document mostly, or spends an awful lot of time dealing with what things look like. I think we need to pay more attention to what things are, okay? I mean, for example, we're talking about things that interrupt the flow of pedestrians. Well, you know, if, if an endocrinologist opens up an office on Main Street, that's going to be of great interest to people who have hypothyroidism, but not much interest to anyone else, you know? I think we, I think we need to, I think in order to make these areas interesting, we need to ensure that the businesses that go in are interesting to pedestrians, you know? A high-end retail clothing store, my wife would go into the Winchester Mystery House to get to that. She doesn't really care, you know, what the outside of the building looks like. And I think that is a critical factor. I think that's really important to say, we do want these kinds of activities. We want to see things which appeal to pedestrians and not things which just happened to be there because there was a vacant storefront and the guy was looking for a place to locate. And it's a hard, it's a hard thing to put into words, you know what I'm saying? But I really think it needs to be in this document somewhere to say that, you know, and, and I think then it needs to be developed as part of the zoning ordinance, you know? In other words, the implementation of that would be in the zoning ordinance to say, these are allowed uses, these are not allowed uses in, in, in this particular area. And we may have to, in the downtown area and the Embarcadero area, we may have to deal a little bit with like micro areas. In other words, what's desirable on Morro Bay Boulevard may not be the same thing that's desirable on Harbor Street, one block over. So, you know, I, I really think, I think that is, I think that's a, that is at least as critical as what the street furniture looks like and what, you know, what color the buildings are painted. So I, you know, I would, I would, I would urge that, that concept be endorsed before this goes forward to the council.
He's looking at you guys. What do you think?
Sure, Ben. Just a couple, not rebuttals, but, but yeah, you know, predicting what the next, what the next attraction is or what the next retail attraction is going to be and how it's going to correlate is, is really tough to put into ordinances and stuff. But I agree with the concept and, you know, and then another point, you know, to kind of, and now I'm being the antithesis here, but for Joe, we talk about affordability, we talk about, you know, getting, anytime we restrict size, anytime we restrict the building opportunities, we increase the expense. And so, you know, there's a direct correlation there that people tend to forget about. I think we just need to, need to be aware of on that. So, so, you know, other than that, I agree almost wholeheartedly. As far as bicycles, a couple you brought up bicycles, I rode a lot of, I've ridden a lot of miles on a bicycle. And I'm more comfortable in the traffic than I am trying to go back and forth between designated bike lanes when going on the wrong side of the street where people are pulling out and don't know to look, you know, to the wrong direction to do. to do it. As far as the Embarcadero and the downtown area, Commissioner Teft was perfectly right that the bicycles are going to be faster and more nimble than the traffic, and the interactions that are going to be problematic are going to be more between pedestrians and bicycles. But also, where the bicycles do need to have a safe lane is getting from the outskirts, from the outskirts of town to the core. That's where we need to have more, more valid bicycle paths, you know? Coming down Pacific or coming, you know, coming up Harbor or something where, where it's, we create a set bicycle lane for bicycles or on, coming down Main Street, we have a more, you know, a stripe designated bicycle lane. You know, those are, I think, are the more important, and that's where you're going to have the injuries, where you're going to have the discrepancies of the cars traveling 50 miles an hour, 45 miles an hour, and the bicycles traveling 12 to 17 miles an hour. So those are, those are, in the core and on the Embarcadero, you know, I don't think it's a real problem. The bikes can fit right into traffic and observe all the traffic rules, and I think you're, you're safe. But.
Yeah. Thank you.
You know, with respect to Chairman Teft's comment about exercising some sort of planning as to the, as to the mix of businesses, particularly on Morro Bay Boulevard, you know, I find myself in a curious situation of maybe arguing, making a free-market argument. But I think the record is pretty poor about that kind of planning. I think, I think it works in terms of certain classifications, I mean, liquor stores, thrift stores, it might be tattoo parlors. You can, you can prescribe, you know, beyond a, you know, a certain number, but I, but I have a feeling that the way to really change things for the better is just to get more foot traffic there and that, that.
That's, that's the way to do it, is to have things that are interesting for, I mean, the typical, I'm sorry to interrupt, Joe, but the typical, the typical block, pedestrian block in Morro Bay is hotels, you know what I'm saying? There's very little interest for the typical pedestrian to go past a large hotel to see what's on the other side.
Well, that's, that's a good point. And those kind of categories could be, could be added to the list. I guess, I guess my point is, you can't get, you can't get too specific, I guess, and that probably, I'm sure that wasn't your intent in terms of picking winners. Yeah, I see your point.
But that's how, I'm going to jump in on this because I'm going to beat my dead horse, with the, that's how the specific design guidelines can work. You, you don't island out by having a large hotel take up half the block that people won't want to walk through. If you're going to have that hotel there, then they have frontage, they have retail frontage on the pedestrian way. That creates the entrance through, and the hotel can be ancillary and come in secondary from the backside and the second floor. So that's, that's why the specific guidelines, design guidelines are so, I view are so critical to making the downtown and the Embarcadero work.
We could speak to that specifically, I mean, it's actually a valid point. The hotel that's under construction in Pismo Beach right down next to the pier, it was a long drawn-out fight, because that has, roads, streets on three sides of it, to get, to get, to activate those street frontages, because they came in and there was wall and wall, and a restaurant on one corner, and then another wall that went down the other side, and we're like, no, that's not okay. You need to put retail in there, and even if they're small, relatively small stores, we're okay with that, but you need to have a retail frontage so you, because on Pomeroy, which goes right down to the pier, basically, it shops the whole way down there, and then you were going to have to get down right almost next to the pier, and then the next last building you come to on that side was going to be a blank wall. And so we could, I mean, from, from that type of thing, we could be specific about the, the streets and really specific about the issue related to the hotels that we have down there. On Morro Bay Boulevard, when you get down that hotel area where those hotels are, there's no engagement with the, with the pedestrian at all. And so it just, it just, we have like a two and a half, three-block area there, which is no man's land, which is, what this is supposed to be doing is connecting the two, and, I mean, being specific about that area would probably be a good idea, saying that, you know, as things redevelop or as things happen, we'd like to see retail reestablished in those locations.
And the idea would not, the idea would not to be, the idea would not be to be proscriptive, the idea would not be to prohibit things. The idea would be to say, you want to put in an established business establishment on Morro Bay Boulevard, okay? Tell us how this is going to be of interest to pedestrians. I mean, I can see, you know, I can see a glass-blowing studio that would have finished product in the window and you could look through and see them blowing, fantastic, you know? We don't need to be limiting ourselves to the old idea of restaurant, you know, retail store, you know? But as, you know, when that comes to the Planning Commission, one of the questions is, tell us how this is going to appeal to people that are walking by.
Yeah, I, I really like what you're saying, and the diversity, it doesn't have to be a coffee shop or whatever. I worked in a bicycle shop in Fremont District over in Seattle, and it was an old building, and then there was a window, and then the sidewalk was just on the other side of the window, you'd be working on your bike, and, you know, people walking by. So these are the kind of like things that, you know, just, oh, of interest, so it could be as diverse as that. Yeah, but I agree with you.
Did you want any more from us?
No, I think that, that discussion about the comment that Chair Teft made, getting some clarification on when that was good, I think we can address that. I think the specific issue that we were seeing there, that makes sense, because that's an issue that we have, and it, and it really, it gets at the heart of why we did this, and that is, we have three blocks down there that don't connect, and we need to do better there, so being really specific, especially in that area, is worthwhile. I think it doesn't hurt the rest of the area either to have generalized statements that actually do that as well, but I think calling out that area down there and saying, in here, when you're bringing development in, it needs to do these types of things is, is absolutely okay, and we should say that. We do want storefronts and windows and those types of things, activity there, because we don't have it now, and that's why no one walks between those areas. I mean, we need to get people up the stairs, too, that's another story, and we have other things going on for that, but, yeah, I mean, if you, if you walk up the stair and go there, you wouldn't walk up to the downtown, you wouldn't necessarily even know it's there unless you've gone through it. I mean, we're going to do signage and things like that, you know, wayfinding, signage, that type of thing, to help out with some of those things, but after the first, I mean, my example, for the first probably three years that I lived on the Central Coast, when I came to Morro Bay, I'd go down onto the waterfront, I thought that was the downtown, I didn't know that it was, and then I drove up one day and I looked down, and I was like, ah, there's people standing outside of a shop over there, it was like a coffee shop or something, I was like, oh, there's something else over there, and I went over and checked it out, but, I mean, that took me three years to find it. I was driving by and I just, you know, didn't notice it was there, so I think other people have that same issue.
Well, even something as simple as changing, changing the location of the Market Day from being in the, you know, on Main Street where you've got to go around it to being that section of Morro Bay Boulevard going from the Centennial Stairs up. Put, you know, put the market there. You know, I never understood why it is where it is.
We've talked to Erica at the Chamber about that. She's actually brought it up, about moving it, you know, at certain times around the corner, at least what's on Morro Bay Boulevard, so you get a little bit of, you know, a little something going on over there, so, I don't know where she's at with that, but yeah, I mean, I see what you're saying.
Okay, I believe we're done? We're done with this? Okay. Moving on then to Planning Commissioner comments. Any comments this evening?
I, I do have a comment, and I would ask the Commission to entertain a future agenda item, like next Planning Commission meeting for a discussion item. And the topic that I would like to discuss is, forgive me, I have a hard time talking, I have a tooth full there.
Ouch.
Yeah. Recently, the California Regional Board, or the Central Coast Regional Quality Control Board, had shown up at the, for those of you who haven't, didn't see the last City Council meeting, but the WRF project has now kind of, they're going to be entertaining in the next two months, can you correct me if I'm misspeaking anything? The next two months, locations for the treatment plant west of Highway 1. And one of the main reasons, and this is something that I brought up like two years ago, is the, the necessity of having a lift station to pump the sewage to wherever you're going to go. Now, one of the sites that I, I was always been in favor of was the Hanson Concrete Site, so, but there's other, what I would like to do is have a discussion with the Commission, and preferably with everybody here, so we have the, every, the whole flavor changes a little bit, you know? But to be able to discuss this opportunity that we have of putting, putting a facility in this area, and what are the challenges, and, you know, like the height requirements and zoning, there's, you know, one of the comments that, that one of the City Council people made was that, oh, they're going to need a LCP amendment for a treatment plant. Well, you're going to need one to put a lift station the size of a small house there, too, you know what I mean? So those are, that's kind of a wash, but these are the kind of things that I think it'd behoove us to discuss and for the public's education, being able, be able to do that. And I know we're going to be talking about zoning and everything else, but this would be kind of like specific to that, and if we could just have that as a discussion item, I, I think that it would be really helpful for the community to get a feel for what, what we're talking about there.
The only thing, the only thing, Richard, that kind of comes up to me, you know, in my mind right away is, is the council going to feel like we're stepping on their toes? You know, I would.
I do have an issue with this. This is not a task the council has given the Planning Commission at this point. At some point, you will see it, because it has environmental documents to go with it, and you will. My concern is, it's such an important project that the council's formed a subcommittee, or formed a committee for it, and that's the WRFCAC, the Water Reclamation Citizen Advisory Committee, and they've looked at it, and you sit on that as a representative for the Planning Commission. And so, and we also have the Public Works Advisory Board, who looks at some of this stuff as well, so we have two boards that are really tasked with looking at this, and the council has not given direction for the Planning Commission to look at it. They formed a special advisory board just for that, again, you sit on it. So I'm a little uncomfortable having us go down that road without having that direction from the council. The council didn't ask the Planning Commission to do any of this when they had this item on the agenda, and so I would think that we'd probably hear back from the City Council that that's probably not something they're super interested in us spending a bunch of time on right now. Planning Commission will get to weigh in on this, though, eventually, because it deals with development and those types of things, so I'm a little concerned about that.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate what you want, what you're wanting to do. The council did give a specific direction, and it is interested in getting public feedback, but we have a whole process for that, and, you know, a whole, we have two other bodies in the city that really, it sits in their sort of house versus, versus ours until the development permits start coming forward, and then, and then you're going to be sitting here with loads of folks in the audience as we go through it, and you'll get to experience the fun as well, you know? But that's going to be once, you know, the project's been cited and a little more, a little more cooked than it is today.
Fair enough.
So, yeah, I mean, I absolutely appreciate where you're going and wanting to get the information out there, but it is a little bit outside of what's been tasked to this body at this point.
Fair enough. I totally respect what you're saying there and wouldn't want to cause any friction there. That said, didn't allow me to, basically, I do sit on the WRFCAC, and one of the, for me, it was really disappointing, is that the consultants, so as we sit, and I've been sitting on there for two years, I, not one of my comments ever made it to the City Council. And one of the things that I've been saying all along, and before Blackavich got paid, I don't know how much money they got paid, was, you know, I've been saying this with AB32, greenhouse gases, you know, energy consumption, all these issues, I've been bringing up, and it was never, it never made it to, to the council, and, and these are the kind of things that are frustrating a lot of people in the community as far as like money being, being wasted, you know? But thank you for at least letting me say my piece, you know? Thank you.
Any other, yeah, Jerry?
Well, this is, this is a comment, I don't think this has anything to do with you, Scott, but it is an issue that's come to my attention from several other community members, is that the weed abatement notices, we, okay, I got one from my shop.
You did, I was told that.
Yeah. And I had, you know, I've weeded it four times this, this year already, just the last time was just like three weeks ago, and it's got, you know, it's got the, the typical mustard fast growth, dry growth on it, and it needs to get weeded again. I'd already contacted the landscaper to come in, he's been out of town for a week, you know, so hopefully he'll get done this week. But the notice that we got, notice I got, was, was dated on the 7th. It was a seven-day notice that the fine would be imposed within seven days of the date. It was, it was postmarked on the 11th, and we received it, our mail comes at 3:30, and we received it 3:30 in the afternoon on the 13th, which I think was, was a Friday, or something like that, and then, and the fine was going to be imposed at 8 o'clock on the 14th, by, by the letter. I really don't think that's enough notification for a $150 fine.
Yeah, if you, if you could, if you, if you wouldn't mind sending me a copy of it, and then write that, writing that up in an email to me, so I can talk with FIRE about it. So just, they need to be aware that that happened, because they don't want that to happen either.
Yeah. And this, this happened to two other friends of mine that live, that got the same notification, they had like one day.
I'll, I'd be happy to bring it to their attention. I know they have, they just recently, their staffing's been reduced on the administrative side of things, and so, yeah, so they have a little, I think that might have been the reason, because it just happened, what you said, but I'd be happy to bring it to their attention, because they would want to know that, they, they wouldn't think that's correct either.
And I'll gladly give you the copies and stuff, and give you the postmarked envelope and stuff, and it's more so than this, because I would appeal it to them, and they've always been reasonable, is that this, this is one of those things that creates anxiety in the community, and, and we really don't.
Well, and it just makes the city look goofy, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's the point, I mean, that's why I say FIRE doesn't, doesn't want that to be the case, because that doesn't look very good, and so they would want to know to make sure that they pay attention to that moving forward, because they may have written it and then sent it over there for it to go out with their admin staff, who is now half of an admin person, basically, and it didn't go out for a few days, is likely what happened, but, you know, they need to know that, so they pay attention to it, so.
So that's all, you know, on that.
Joe? As you all probably know, there have been assertions, the email, that the proponents of the project on Panorama Drive have been removing vegetation in a manner inconsistent with the conditions of the conditional use permit. Could you update us on that?
That's a good question. So we have an issued permit, right? We've, there, we're still waiting to get the information back, to bring it back before you. you. But we did get a, we did receive a complaint, and we've both, planning staff, Whitney McElvein and our code enforcement staff, Dave Crockett, have been investigating the complaint. We're, actually went out on the site today. So it took a while for that to happen, but it finally did. And we did identify that they removed some trees in and around where the tanks are without a CDP, so they are in violation of the city's policy at this point. We did look at, they did do some work in the, there were some downed trees in the Esha area. We did, when they talked to us, that they were going to go in there and clean some of that out. We said, that's fine, you need to do it by hand, don't bring large equipment in there, that type of thing. You can, you can clean stuff up. There's, there's several trees still on the ground over there. And while the complaint did assert that there was heavy equipment there, it doesn't appear that that was the case from what we've seen to this point. You know, we went out there, there was no evidence that that took place. There is a little like graded road area that sits adjacent to it, and they might have had equipment on that. That is outside of the Esha, based on the mapping that we have. But we are in the process of drafting a letter to the applicants. Certainly not maybe the best course of action when you have a pending application and you have a neighborhood that's already concerned about your project, to go out there and start taking things down without the proper permit. They also were doing weed abatement as part of this. I mean, they, they needed to do that. There was a lot of growth out there, and that, that part all went fine, and I think the fire department went out there in the last couple of days and said, that all went very well. But they also tell them, you know, stay out of the, you know, normally the thing is, don't go into the environmentally sensitive habitat areas and, and do those things and whatnot. So at this point, we do know that they, they removed more trees than they were allowed to. They did it during, right at the very end, but still during nesting season. So two issues. And again, we're putting together the violation letter now and probably going to address this through the discretionary permit process related to what we might have them do, and we're looking at various options, including enhancement of the, the Esha area. That area is somewhat degraded, and so there's some work that could be done there to improve it, and seems like that might be a great thing for them to do, considering that they went out there sort of, you know, knocking trees down when they shouldn't have been doing it. They were in areas where the trees were going to be removed anyway, but that's still not okay. They didn't have a permit to do that, so. That's where we're at right now, and those are the conversations, what we're looking at. But beyond that, we even finalized that. Again, we just went out there today, so.
I personally feel that they need, they need to be, they need to be forthright about all this when they come forward with the application, you know? In other words, this is a story that needs to be told as part of that.
It will be part of it, absolutely, because they shouldn't have been out there doing it. They, they would have been able to take down a couple of trees by, with our policy, had they waited a couple of days. I mean, this literally happened at the end of June, and starting July 1, you're at nesting season, and you're able to take down three trees, I think, without having a CDP. So, but they didn't, and I'm not sure why that was the case. And again, we, having conversations and contact with the applicant isn't always the easiest, and so, anyway, we're following up on that, and we'll let you know. You'll know when we get further down the road where we're at, or you can ask me for a report at the next planning commission meeting, and we'll probably have it sort of sewed up by then.
Very good. Then moving, I'm sorry, moving on to community development director comments. Scott?
I don't have anything really, I don't really have anything to, to report back. I had a couple of things that sort of fell off the, fell off my, fell off the plate, so I don't really have anything to bring forward at this point. I'm good. Thank you for all your input this evening, it was, that was good from the DWSP, I appreciate it.
Okay, very good. Then we will, with that, we will return to our next regular meeting to be held here at the Veterans Memorial Building, 6:00 PM on August 1st, 2017. Thank you very much.